Okay, did they notify us through the?
Yes.
Yeah, I just missed that, alright. Because I saw it on another list or something, I was like, hey. And then leaves, my favorite topic. Boy, there's a lot of leaves out. And there's a lot of leaves out in the area where Hilton and Trescott are at. And the folks there have been requesting that soon the leaves come. The leave vacu-- I can't even talk tonight. That soon the leave vacuum will come and suck up all of the leaves. But it seems to me like there are a lot of leaves kind of about in the Ward Two area altogether, too. So I don't know if we're a little slower, or we have a lot more leaves this year, or what. But it seems like they're not quite-- or maybe it's just that they're so wet that they haven't just logged through and it's taken them longer.
Yeah, my guess is the weather is a problem, but I'll double check with the Public Works Director tomorrow.
Yeah, if there's anything that we could do to step it up a little bit.
My sense is they all came down earlier this year, so it's a compressed season and they're wet.
Yeah, they're wet, boy. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Barb, I think Colleen's point is good, that we should be giving public notice soon about the closing of Tiger Creek Parkway, because my understanding is it's supposed to be from December through March. And that's a significant impact on the community. And maybe there's already been a press release put out on that. The other thing I just wanted to mention tonight is that if anyone in the viewing audience happens to be the owner of a solid rocket, a solid fuel rocket that parachuted into my backyard, they can claim their rocket by giving me a call at 301-565-0190.
And identifying it?
And identifying it. And there will be no charges. It was uneventful.
Was it a warhead?
Was it intentional, was the question?
No, there would have been a warhead.
Did it have an invitation?
No invitation, and no identifying marks.
Was it a nuclear-free rocket?
One would hope.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm sorry I missed last week, but I'm back, and happily so, even though I had a wonderful time away with family in California. I wanted to just touch base on the task force on environmental action that we have-- that has been meeting. We in the council have been talking a little bit about a specific grant that we're going to apply for under the ages of the city through the Department of Energy for-- it's a block grant, energy efficiency block grant. And I'm happy to report that we're going to ask the task force to look at shaping that grant application. And I-- what's kind of-- what's in the works, at least in part, is helping find employment for people in our area, which I think is very important. Also, reducing a carbon footprint of people in specific houses. And I'm hoping that we can take the task force's product at the end of their time, what they do for us in this city, which I think will-- I'm sure will be a very good product. It'll be a roadmap of sorts for us in how we can help reduce our energy use. And I'm hopeful that through this grant, whether we get it or not, actually, that the work product of the task force will help us and will be useful to other cities in Maryland. Because I feel we're one of 155, is it? 155 cities in Maryland, and we all need to help each other as best we can. So I'm looking forward to the discussion before the grant application goes in, and if it has some components that can push those ideas forward, if we're lucky enough to get it. And then I'm also, of course, looking forward to the task force's report that's coming out in, I think it's March. It's March, aren't we talking about March?
Yes.
So that's about it.
Councilmember Wright.
Two comments. One is that I'm happy that WSCC or their contractor has paved most of Carroll Avenue. It's very nice, smooth along there. However, they have not paved Rita Carroll and Tulip, I believe it is. And my understanding is that they realize they have to come back to finish the job. But I would ask the city manager if we could have the Public Works Director make sure that they are on top of that and cognizant, because if it starts to get frost and snow, you know, it'll be problems, because the plow will, like, tear up the pavement or something. And it's just something that should be resolved quickly.
And it's dangerous for motorcyclists and bicyclists, I can tell you.
Yes.
And pedestrians.
And then the other thing is just on the task force, the environmental task force, I think they're contemplating coming to give us some sort of preliminary update or conversation in January. I don't know if that's on the agenda yet, but I think that's a good idea. Always good to have a check-in and make sure that we're in agreement, that they're on the right track, and they don't have any questions for us. So you don't-- we don't get to the end and have a cake that's a vanilla cake when we want a chocolate cake or something like that.
I met with one of the co-chairs of the task force last week, and we're looking tentatively at January 11th for an interim report and discussion.
Great.
Councilmember Simmons.
While we're on the topic of paving, I wasn't going to mention this one in public, but I have heard from several constituents. On Erie Avenue, my block, they graciously came back and put in the entire speed bump in the upper part of the street, but they neglected to do that for the other speed bump right in front of my house. So we have half a speed bump. Because you remember, they tore up half the street, and so they only put in the speed bump. There were two speed bumps on Erie, and they only put in one. But it's great for motorcyclists or--
That's right.
--cyclists, because you can-- if you get real close to the car, you can actually go up without hitting the speed bump at all. But of course, so can the cars, and you know.
If I can just add that my understanding from talking with our Public Works Director is that the contractor's supposed to come back and do the half-speed bump, four pieces of intersections, and the mill strip in the middle of the block of the 7500 block of Carroll Avenue, which--
Right.
--surprises many people going down the hill toward the creek.
Yes.
So I think all of those things are on that list.
And it's really too bad that they couldn't go just a little bit around the corner in front of the co-op, because there's some major nasty potholes there that State Highway is not-- deemed not to be necessary to fill.
Yeah, that's the problem, the State Highway. Because there's one on Flower that constituents already got in a flat tire, and several other people have had their car damaged, but it's on the Silver Spring side of the street.
And that reminds me, is that section-- is that a section of Ethan Allen that the State Highway Administration is currently claiming isn't theirs, but it's ours?
I don't know how far it comes. It's right at the corner, so it's right where the-- in the bus pullout. I'm not sure if that's the-- it's right in front of the co-op.
Has it--
And that's the snag, isn't it? That they say that they don't want to take responsibility for their street?
Right.
Is it because it's-- you know about this. Is it because it's a two-lane and not a four-lane? Or is it because it's in our city, or not, you know?
Yeah.
But they can't pay us just because it's in our city, because there's lots of State Highway in our city.
They seem to have changed their mind about what they own.
What they own?
Yes. They're claiming that it was never theirs, I believe.
You know my take on that. If they claim that they don't own it, that means we get to barricade it.
Right.
I'm telling you, a day of barricades, it'll change their mind.
Or put a toll on it.
A toll! That's a great idea!
How much money do we need, City Manager?
Could we get a clarification on which parts of Carroll are in dispute? I think that would be valuable.
And maybe what the status of those talks are, and whether we need to escalate it? Because my sense is that's been kind of in dispute for a while, and may not be going anywhere, and therefore, they may not be doing anything. Anything else about paving, or speed bumps, or other people's roads? It seems to be the topic. Okay, then we'll move to maybe even a more interesting item with-- no, yeah, we're not going to have any-- we don't have any minutes to go down. The usually dry item, which I think has a little bit of drama to it this evening, which is the additional agenda items and the agenda scheduling update. This evening's meeting has kind of had a change or two. One major portion of which was going to be the presentation by Councilmember Valerie Irvin. She hasn't been here, I don't think, in about a year, maybe more. And we finally coordinated schedules to get her here, and then she called in this morning and said that she was going home because she was ill and was afraid she had the flu, and sorry she wouldn't be here this evening. So there's, I believe, already some effort to try and coordinate for her to come and talk with us in January, but we will need to work that out. So the first item on this evening's agenda, the presentation by County Councilmember Valerie Irvin, will no longer be on the agenda this evening. But something that I would like to substitute in as the first item on the agenda, first item on our regular meeting, is a single reading ordinance on the capacity building initiative. And if I can just take a minute and explain why that's back before us after we voted last week. The-- since it was a single reading ordinance, we had a roll-call vote, and there were six of us here, and the vote was three in favor, one opposed, and two abstentions. The first thing is that I had-- it was interesting that earlier that day I had read the Revised Rules of Procedure for the Council of Governments Board, and it talked about how to deal with abstentions or votes of present. And it turns out that those rules of procedure deal with them differently. They basically said for a board vote that those voting present or abstaining didn't count as part of the number of people for the vote. It turns out that our rules say that if people are present in the room, that they count as the number of people in figuring out the vote. Therefore, because we had two abstentions in the room, we had a total of six people voting, three people in favor of the ordinance. Therefore, the two abstentions were effectively no votes, and it was a tie. Therefore, it--
Go ahead.
--didn't pass. Therefore, if we want to take it up again this evening, we could have it as the first item on the agenda, but we would need technically, I guess, to reconsider that vote. Normally, a vote for reconsideration has to be asked by somebody who was in the majority of the previous vote, but since there was no majority on the previous vote, it's-- it can effectively be anybody who can ask for that reconsideration. And one of the things that I would just elaborate on a little bit there is one of the reasons that we had two abstentions on this vote last week was, one of them was, I believe, Councilmember Wright, who was abstaining because of a possibility of a conflict of interest, or an appearance of a conflict of interest. And what I would essentially say is, in the future, for anybody who is abstaining for a reason like that, and doesn't want to potentially be part of-- essentially have the abstention count as a no vote, they might want to leave the room for that discussion and vote. Don't have to, but that's-- the ramification can be something like we had last week. Oh, and one other thing that I learned in looking into this a little bit is that, according to Robert's Rules of Order, the chair of a meeting is never supposed to call for abstentions, only the yays and the nays. Therefore, I would advise my colleagues, if you want to abstain on a vote, you're going to have to kind of make it known by saying abstain loud enough for me and for the clerk to hear, I will not be calling for abstentions. So with that, let me just talk a little bit about future-- okay, before I leave that one, did you--
Yeah, if a council member just remained silent then, didn't say yea or nay, the clerk would record that as a non-vote then. Is that correct?
And what's the difference between a non-vote and an abstention?
You know, I'm thinking that we record-- I would record that as an abstention, because you're abstaining from voting.
But would you--
There was no vote. You're part of the quorum, though, in that situation.
But you would have to notice if it was a voice vote, that there was somebody who didn't vote, which may be difficult.
Well, you know, if you do a voice vote, and it's not apparent which way the vote went-- I mean, it only really matters if there's a majority. I mean, the truth of the matter is, if there's not a roll-call vote-- I tend to record the roll always, but if it's a voice vote--
If it's a voice vote and all you hear is yes, it's going to be the assumption that everybody voted yes. Therefore, if you're abstaining on a voice vote, you probably need to say abstain.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let me just cover future agenda items.
I'd like to have a comment on that.
Go ahead.
It seems to me somewhat disingenuous to have a process whereby someone is abstaining because they have a conflict of interest, but they can still manipulate the vote by whether or not they sit at the table or not.
Right.
And so I think that it should be one or the other, but not both. Because if you had someone who's abstaining this time, and they wanted it to pass, given the history of the vote, they would leave. If they wanted it to fail, they would stay at the table. So extracting ourselves from this particular situation for the long term, I think we should have a consistent policy that--
Right.
And it seems weird to make people leave the table. I mean, my sense would be, if you're going to abstain, you sit at the table and abstain. But even if it's going to be the other way, that's fine, but let's have it be one or the other, and not just an opportunity for people to manipulate the vote quietly when they have a conflict of interest.
Well, but it could happen other times as well. I can think of a couple of times in my time on the council where I didn't want to vote yea on a vote, I didn't necessarily want to vote nay, I left the room so that I didn't have to.
That's fine, and if that's the way we're going to go, we should make that be the standard. But it needs to be one or the other, otherwise you can still manipulate the vote based on whether you sit in your chair or not.
So you're saying that we might want to adopt something like, if you're abstaining because of a conflict-- if you're recusing yourself from the conversation, you should leave the room for the conversation and the vote, and we'll make sure we get you back in?
Yes.
That would be--
I think that's good.
I happen to disagree with that, because I think that if I'm actually abstaining from the conversation or the vote, which I've publicly stated, I want that on the record and acknowledged. If I leave the room, then that's not part of the official record or my position.
But I'm assuming you would say, I'm going to recuse myself from this item? And if you want to say why, you say why, and then you can leave the room. And then it's on the record.
Mayor, I think the clerk and I were just talking. I think there's a difference between a recusal and an abstention. An abstention is simply not participating in the voting. A recusal essentially means, which I think is what Councilmember Wright desires to do, a removal from the entire process, discussion, and the vote.
Right, right.
So I think when someone has recused himself, that is recorded in the minutes.
I do record that.
Yes.
Okay.
But if, as was the case last week, you recuse, stay in the room, and then abstain--
Correct.
That's--
It's technically not a recusal, it's an abstention, unless you're formally recusing yourself from the action on that item.
So maybe you can round it, we just have a formal recusal, and then that vote doesn't count in--
So if we had--
--the total value of people who are counted.
So if we had been clear about that last week--
Count them in.
The recusal would have meant that Councilmember Wright did not abstain, therefore was not part of the vote. Am I correct on that?
Had he recused himself, Wright?
That's correct.
But he also--
He did.
--abstained.
Yes.
But yes, under that logic, had he just recused himself and then not said anything during the vote?
Right, he would not have been part of the group on which the votes were counted.
Okay.
Who cares, Josh?
That implies that you can recuse yourself--
And still sit at the table?
Still sit at the table.
Yes.
Not vote, and be--
And not part of--
I'm not part of this vote.
And intimidate your colleagues into voting where you want.
I figured that might be an interesting point and discussion. Is there anything else that we need to do with that before I finish my agenda update? The clerk looks puzzled.
No, I'm wondering if we actually-- if you might actually want to lay out--
That'll--
--formalize these things a little bit.
I think so.
Something to think about for the new year.
A nice little task for all that time you're going to have in December.
Yeah, I have other plans.
Okay. Looking ahead, we're not meeting in December, but when we come back in January, the first meeting is January 4th. Of course, all the items on the agenda at this point are tentative, except the special session and discussion and second reading ordinance authorizing the sale of a bond for renovation of a public works facility, assuming that we go forward with that. But that item is on the agenda and needs to stay on the agenda for that date. Also scheduled for that is work session discussions on the status of the community ban and the renaming of Jackie Park in honor of Belle Ziegler. As I mentioned, Valerie Irvin, we're going to try and have her back sometime in January, we're not sure when, and that the Environmental Task Force interim report and discussion is tentatively scheduled for the 11th, along with a discussion of dog parks. Tuesday, the 19th, is scheduled to be Ward Three night at the council meeting, and Monday, the 25th, results of the resident survey.
Mayor Williams--
Yes.
What's in your mind on the ward nights? Can you elucidate a little bit about what you've got-- what your thinking is on those nights?
My thinking so far is that people from-- an invitation would go out to people in the ward who would want to come to the meeting with particular emphasis on maybe some representatives of neighborhood associations, or whatever other groups there might be. It might be an opportunity for somebody, like, for instance, in Ward Three, there's the Community Garden. If there's a-- somebody wanted to come and, you know, there was some particular thing about the Community Garden that needed to come up, that people could come and would be invited for 7:00 on that evening, and we could have, I don't know, Punction Cookies or something in the atrium, and a chance to informally talk to people. And then the first item that we get to on the agenda as early as possible would be a chance for the people who come to talk about any particular issues in the ward, and a chance for the council to maybe have a little discussion on those items. As it evolves, I can imagine also having particular items that we put on the agenda that would be ward-specific or of ward-interest. It might be an opportunity to-- if it was Ward Two, and there were particular things that needed to be discussed before we got to the, say, a Long Branch Sligo traffic study, or somebody wanted to come say, you know, gee, we've been waiting for this, why isn't it here? Reinforcing what Councilmember Clay has said recently. Just any number of opportunities for things like that, or to let people know what's going on in the ward, or, you know, a new something is forming, whatever it might be.
How does-- how do you and how does staff feel about-- if it's my ward, which it would be, the first one here, approaching staff and asking for some kind of a thumbnail sketch of what their department is doing in our ward as a preparatory measure?
Sure, sure.
Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah, yeah, that would be helpful.
I can think of a number of departments in the city that I'd love to get an update just for Ward Three from.
And then you could maybe distribute that ahead of time, maybe if there were some particular things that you wanted to cover that evening, in addition to some distribution, maybe to flesh out something.
I can also envision, since I would have something of a captive audience, putting budget issues in front of them, that you don't get the-- you don't get people in here to talk about budget issues too much. If it was-- if we had them in our clutches, we might be able--
But that's not necessarily award-specific.
Well, okay, you got me thinking.
Councilmember Wright.
I like Councilmember Robinson's proposal on this summary of what's going on in the ward. So can we assume, City Manager Matthews, that each of us can get one of those a few weeks in advance of our--
Great, thanks.
Then we will move on to the public comment period, and that's for anybody who's any comments to make on anything that is not a regular meeting agenda item. So it's anything not on the regular meeting agenda, it's anything that's in the work session, and it's also anything on the consent agenda items. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Roz Czyk, I'm the Director of the Urban Development Association. I wanted to talk tonight about an item on the consent agenda, the resolution declaring December to be-- think Tacoma by local month. And I wanted to say thank you to council for taking the initiative on this. I think it's an essential part, knowing the importance of fourth quarter. Locally-owned independent businesses provide the lifeblood in a small town in a community like ours. They provide the character, the support for local causes, the places for people to gather and meet. They provide jobs, they're often first jobs for a lot of youth as well. And I wanted to ask council to take this one step further. Your own language on the resolution ends saying that both as a council and as individuals, you encourage the community to join you in supporting local businesses. I would like to challenge council members individually to do your holiday shopping in Tacoma Park this year. And I'm joined tonight by Owen Mack, representing the Tacoma Langley Crossroads, and Emily Van Loon, talking about supporting local businesses. As a city, as a whole, the options presented by locally-owned independent businesses in Tacoma Park are very diverse and varied. And I think it's very reasonable to say a person could do their holiday shopping here. And I hope that you will show us the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. I certainly echo what Roz has said, and particularly the word diversity. If there's any organization that represents diversity, it would be the Crossroads Development Authority. Consequently, you're right, Roz, when you say, no matter what it is you want, we can sure get it for you fast. Just call one of us, and we'll help guide you to the appropriate location. The city deserves-- the city businesses deserve city business, city council members' business, residents' business, because that's what makes the city possible. A second item that I want to bring to your attention was really better-- would be better presented by our timid CSafe director, who's really not timid, but she said, oh, you speak. And that is, Santa Claus is going to be in the crossroads on December 8th. I have no clue who that's going to be. But on December 8th, we have a press conference where the chief of the city of Tacoma Park, chief of Prince George's County, the chief of Montgomery County are going to join us in the former Safeway location. Any of you who are willing-- interested in coming, be there at noon. The press will be there. Weather permitting, we'll have an antique car of certain vintage, over 100 years old, and Santa Claus dressed in-- and driving that car accompanied by multiple motorcycles, with police cars, sirens, and lights going through the intersection multiple times. So good days are ahead of us, both in shopping and in the pleasure of pedestrian safety, which is what we're really all about that CSafe is sponsoring. You folks really don't have a clue how fortunate you are in having both Mary Kendall and Gretchen Hilberger sitting with you tonight in the work they do for this community. They're more silent than most people realize, but they really, really represent the city of Tacoma Park, the state interest in governor's office control and prevention, crime control and prevention, and our concerns for the crossroads.
So this is Tuesday, December--
December 8th. At noon-- the press conference starts at noon, Mary, am I right? With the city providing audiovisual services, and the press will be there, including the Gazette?
Yes.
Oh.
Thanks, Ellen.
Hello, my name is Emily Van Loon, and I'm a long-term resident of Tacoma Park. And I, too, would like to encourage you all to buy Tacoma this year. I, myself, have lived in two areas of Tacoma Park. I've lived in the Crossroads area for many years, and then moved into-- closer into downtown in Sycamore, so I'm devoted to both areas. I certainly will challenge you all to come to Pajama Day on Sunday. We're going to be-- Sycamore Avenue has thrown down the gauntlet and challenged other streets-- We're going to be, Sycamore Avenue has thrown down the gauntlet and challenged other streets in the city to come forward and wear their pajamas. Photographs are going to be taken by me and my husband, Tom Wolfe, who's a professional photographer, at Roscoe's Place, not Roscoe, the pizza place, but Roscoe's, the rooster place, the statue place. And I would love to get a group photo of the council in their jammies as they come shop Tacoma. To get your picture taken, you have to have a receipt from a Tacoma Park store, whether that be at the crossroads or Old Tacoma. So we're certainly looking forward to seeing you guys Sunday. And it's going to, it looks like it's going to be a great day. So thank you.
And the date again?
Pyjama Day is Sunday, this coming up Sunday. Pyjama Rama, I guess, is what it's called, December 6th. And it starts at seven and goes from seven to 10:00. In the morning, not at night, in the morning, when you would be wearing your jammies. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, city managers' comments?
Yeah, so the chief is here this evening to provide another update on crime in the city, and I also asked the chief if he could address Councilmember Siemens' comment about departmental staffing.
Since I last reported, things have been a little bit better. We haven't had any armed robberies and we haven't had any burglaries in the city. We had two incidents that are drug related, gang related, which are in a separate category from some of the things that have got our citizens upset. And we're working them as I speak. We have the same detail still working the street. We've identified several more suspects and we're running their prints on some of the prints we've got from some of the break-ins in the cars. We will continue the detail. Tom, satisfied that things have calmed down to the point we can resume what I call normal patrol. But we continue to have the tactical group and our extra patrol out at night in the target areas, and so far, so good. And we will continue to look at that. Crime continues to abound us, so to speak, around us. The county's being hit real hard with some of the robberies that we've hopefully keep, can keep at the Tacoma Park, what we call gang robberies, three or four, coming up to kids coming home or people coming from bus stops. So we're very aware of that and we're targeting those areas. Concerning questions on staffing, right now, we're down one sworn police officer, which we are advertising. We're doing five interviews next week, which has been an ongoing process. We keep our standards high, so we're not just hiring the first person that comes along, and I will continue to do that. So we have five scheduled for interviews next week, and hopefully we'll be able to fill that position by the middle of the new year. We also have vacant our crime analyst position, but I've been able to use some of my ties to the county. And I had a young lady who had worked for me, who retired and agreed to come back as least helping us part-time till we can get a crime analyst on board. I've got 15 interviews scheduled when I come back from leave next week on that, and I hope to have that position filled by the middle of January. Because I would tell you right now, that position is a vital position. If I didn't realize it before, since Kylene left, it really has hurt us and some of the information we are able to get. But we are continuing to add our data in our databases, and our temporary one is helping us out quite a bit. Questions?
Just about, how many officers are injured?
As of today, there is four. One officer will return to work on Thursday. I have one sergeant that has an illness, it's non-job related. We hope to get him back in around four to six weeks. I have a corporal in K-9 who has had knee surgery. We expect to get him back in April. And I have one of our PFCs that suffered an ankle injury on a call. We hope to have her back within six weeks.
Thank you.
There's been this individual who's been going around, I think you may be aware of this, and ringing doorbells not?
We arrested him last week.
Did he get out?
He shouldn't have.
Because there was, I think, an email?
Those, I'm familiar with the emails you're talking about. There was an incident on Ritchie Avenue side of the county. We've called the county, I'm 99% sure it's the same guy, and I've given that information to Montgomery County to follow up. The one we had, it hit a few other streets, hit Piney Branch last week, and we did arresting.
Okay, because there's, I think, last night or the night before on New York Avenue, and the individual called, said he called the police. And then someone else on Boston, so I can forward you some of the emails.
Yeah, forward, let me see if it's, as far as I'm, no, he's still in jail.
It seems like the same individual whose story is he's, needs to get to Frederick to help his mother or something like that.
There may be another one using a scam too this time of year, but send me the emails because I wouldn't be aware of that.
Can we have someone come to our house? I just sent him down the road. Same, same thing, get off my porch.
You probably ought to call next time.
Send him to 7500 Maple Avenue.
Some, some people don't put the fear of God, like, I have a feeling you may have done.
It's been a couple of weeks since it happened.
We, the one that I think did Ritchie Avenue and we had on Piney Branch is definitely under arrest. If there's been another one since, I'm not sure, but if you forward me the emails, I'll check into it.
Could you comment on, I understand that you completed your selection of members of the chief's advisory committee. Could you kind of tell me what, what the schedule is for that organization getting started, meeting, and what your plans are for, at least at the outset?
I'm sending an email out today to the members because one of the things that came up over the weekend is I want to be able them to be reached by the citizens that live close to them. So I've asked them for either an email or phone address and the street they live on. We want to put that out so they know who they can contact, who's the closest. Once I get that information back, I may try to meet with them, because I'm looking for a meeting date also. I've asked them what works for them the best. And if I can get all that information back by next week, I may meet with them in the third or fourth week of December, even though it's Christmas, I would like to get started. If not, we'll definitely start in January with, and all meetings are obviously open to the public, and we will announce them in advance. But that's my goal, is to get it started up. If I can get it started up this month, I will, if not January, definitely will have our first meeting.
Is it your hope to then set a regular time each month?
Yeah, I want to have the same date so everybody knows it on the committee and for the public.
So you probably did this point in time a little too early to anticipate what you may be wanting to accomplish in that first?
Well, what I'll accomplish is get it up and running, let the community know who they can contact, and then obviously a break-in period with them to orient them to what we do in the department and how they can assist us.
Okay.
You said there were no major crimes essentially this past week. We had a break-in on Maple Avenue. The guy was essentially chased away. He didn't actually get into the house.
We're, we're still following that one up. It's not the normal break-in that starts. We're still looking into that incident.
Are there any questions for the chief? Okay, that's okay. Then we will move to the first item on our agenda, which is the single reading ordinance on the capacity building initiative. If somebody would like to move for reconsideration of that item?
I move for reconsideration.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Wright?
I'm recusing myself from this discussion. Yeah, but I don't want to leave the room.
Correct. Under, under what we just discussed, there, the, the universe on this item is six of us.
And I'm doing that because my wife works for Casa Maryland, which was one of the entities that applied for this capacity building initiative.
Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. Last time this came up for consideration, I voted against it. And I, at that time, I explained that my reason is that I think this council is facing some serious financial challenges as we move forward. And I think it's time that this council should start to take a stand to eliminate any possible expenditures, to minimize our expenses. And I felt that there was no better issue to show my desire and commitment to reducing expenses than to vote no on this particular issue, because it is certainly in an area that I have tried to, to take a stand before to represent the low-income residents of the community and to especially pay close attention to the needs of renters. But I think that in the coming years, where this group has been very beneficial for helping residents to purchase their buildings, as owners were looking to convert them from rental properties to ownership opportunities, I think those are, those are diminishing with, given the housing market now. We're not going to be seeing property owners of rental properties trying to convert their homes to, or their buildings to ownership. And I think it's, it's important that we show the community that we are interested in keeping our expenses down, lowering them from where they've been, so that we could save the taxpayers money. So that's why I voted against it last week, and I will vote against it again this week.
Councilmember Clay?
Last week I abstained, this week I'm going to vote against it. I agree with much of what Councilmember Siemens has said. I think that we have to start prioritizing things and, you know, we're going to talk about ending our police accreditation process because we don't have enough funding to pay for the police accreditation. And there's some other things we're talking about, kind of letting the sun set. And this is a contract to pay community organizers $85 an hour, which we should be happy, I guess, that it's down from $95 an hour the last time, although some people have pointed out to me that's cheap for a consultant. And the, it gives the city manager the authorization to renew the contract for an additional three 12-month term. So, you know, we're, we're committing then to, to four years of this, which I just don't think is necessary right now. It's, it's not that I don't think that tenant capacity building is a valuable activity, because I think that it is valuable activity, and I think we've gotten some benefits out of it. I would agree that we're going to see less push to condo conversion because the financial dynamics aren't, aren't there to incentivize condo conversion. I think we're still going to see buildings come up available for sale, but I, you know, my fear is that there are going to be folks who overpaid for their buildings in the, in the rush. It's going to be a long, difficult process. It's going to be people who have, you know, failed to pay on their mortgages, and there's going to be a lot of money that's owed on the places, and, and they'll end up in foreclosure, and it won't be pretty. And I doubt it'll be a really, really conducive to tenant opportunities to, to purchase. And that's, you know, that's my professional opinion, but, so, so those are the reasons, essentially. I think that it's unfortunate that we have all these things coming before us to make these, these votes on without, and we don't have the budget process yet where we can really say, look, this is what we're going to prioritize and this is what we're not going to prioritize. We've gotten a lot of push from people in the community about, you know, how we're funding economic development. Is that more of a priority than, than tenant capacity building? We, we provide $30,000 to the Old Town Business Association to help fund their activities. And, and the $30,000 that we provide, provide to them, as I understand, it leverages like nine times that amount of money through their organization. We provide $30,000 to the CSafe Initiative. Is that right, $30,000?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So we're providing 15. The county's providing 30 in Montgomery County. Prince George's is providing in-kind resources and zero money. And the state is providing money. But in any case, the $15,000 leverages a lot of other resources. So I also think that maybe there's other ways we could go about doing the, the tenant capacity building that, that we're engaging in.
Councilmember Snipper?
I'm going to vote in favor of this because I've seen the work of these two. They do more than just focus on helping tenants buy buildings. They do capacity in its more generic sense of supporting tenant associations, organizing tenant associations in the buildings. This is a really important and ongoing task that our housing department has not been able to do very well, partly because you need, you need to meet with the tenants when they're available to meet, and that's nights and weekends. And that's in fact when these two have been and will be meeting with tenants. I have been on a number of these meetings with them, when they come, nights and weekends to work on them, and I've seen them in action. And the tenants really appreciate it because they need people who understand the rules, understand the procedures, understand what the tenants' rights are. And Ms. Look and Mr. Cristaldo are very good at it. So I'm, would be happy to support this. I think it's a high priority item.
Other comments? Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, I voted in favor of this resolution ordinance at the last meeting, and again, I will vote in favor of it. My reasons are really, there's a, one is that, well, first of all, I just find it an uncomfortable thing to do, to start to try to save the county, the city's budget issues on the backs of tenants, as opposed to some other constituency in the city. And I'm not the kind that's going to say, well, every constituency has to be protected. But I do think that this is one group that is uniquely isolated from the normal opportunity to know what's going on in the city and to be able to participate in the city government. I, I don't agree necessarily with, with council members' remarks that the housing trends are such that there's not going to be much need for this kind of work. I don't think any of us knows enough as to what's going on in the housing market for multifamily units. And I think it's a bit, could be a bit presumptuous to assume that we're not going to see units coming on the market for sale. In fact, to the contrary, with housing prices, multifamily housing prices being depressed as much as they are, along with all the other property values, commercial and residential, this could be in more opportune time for tenants to be able to afford to buy units than it could be, than it was, say, two years ago. I would comment also that where it says that the city manager is further authorized to renew as appropriate such contract for up to three additional 12-month terms, certainly is not mandatory that the city manager do that. City manager has that decision at her discretion to do that. So I don't think we're necessarily committing ourselves for any particular number of years. But it is, if we feel that it's being unsatisfactorily taken care of, the issue, or if we feel that indeed the facts show that there really isn't, no, no tenant conversions going on in the city, it's something that we could step in and intervene and stop at a, at a future time. In testimony last, last week, I got the distinct impression that the city, other than this program, really does not have a capacity internally to do the kind of work that these consultants are doing. And so I think if we don't allow this to happen, this is just something that isn't going to happen, notwithstanding our desire. And I find it kind of odd that we go to great lengths to have the rent stabilization ordinance in this city and are very proud of that rent stabilization ordinance and its uniqueness in the state of Maryland and other jurisdictions. But at the same time, we're hesitant to advance funds to make sure that tenants understand the existence of this ordinance and what rights that it provides to them. I think if we're going to have the ordinance, we have an obligation to make sure that the beneficiaries of it know about, know about the ordinance, how to make it work for them, how to address issues, get questions answered. the ordinance, how to make it work for them, how to address issues, get questions answered. And so therefore, I think it's consistent that we provide, continue to provide this capacity building.
Any other comments?
I wasn't here last week, and so I didn't hear this discussed then. And I'm thankful to all of my colleagues so far in making the comments you have, because it's been very instructive. I'm sometimes the numbers guy, and I see both Linda Walker and Sarah Danes in the audience. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask what their take on any measurable items that there are as far as how many conversions have been processed in the last few years, or how many they anticipate to be processed in the next couple of years, four years, because that's what this contract is for. Is it kosher to ask one of you to come up and comment on this to me or for us?
Sure. In the number of years that Roseanne and Mario have been under contract with us, they have established about twelve tenant associations within the city. And their work has not necessarily been just with properties that are being sold, but with properties that are under duress. For instance, Hampshire Towers is one in particular that Roseanne and Mario have been working on for the last three years, I think, and through the varying stages that those tenants have gone through. As you know, one of the properties, one of the units was converted to condo, and the other one remains rental. And all the tenants had to be vacated from one of the units. So we felt that the capacity builders were instrumental, especially in this, because they helped guide the tenants and the tenant association through the process that was going to take place for that, when all the tenants had to be transferred to the other unit. There have been about six tenant groups that have been assisted with their opportunities to purchase the properties. And as you know, I think there's about two of the properties that were successful, the one property on Maple Avenue at the end of, right across the street from seven seven, seven seven Maple. And so there has been definitely interest. When properties go on the market for sale, we don't know when that's going to happen. And so Councilmember Schultz's comment on the fact that just because the market is the way it is, isn't really necessarily the best guideline for how many we'll have in the future. Landlords who find that they're overwhelmed by the maintenance and, you know, having a rental property often decide that they're going to sell it, and that's when the tenants do have the opportunity to purchase. So I'm not really sure that we can foresee in the future how many of those opportunities will be there for the tenants.
Is this kind of organizing something that the county does as well?
No, they don't, actually. This is--
They don't provide any of this kind of organizing anywhere in the county?
No, this is a fairly unique program. In fact, other communities have been, you know, kind of interested to know that we do this, because they have, you know, like we do, our landlord tenant office, where tenants do call in if they have questions. But when somebody needs to go out to the property to organize a tenant association, you know, I mean, we would have to do that, you know, ourselves, you know.
Okay, I have a couple. I'm just going to kind of fire through my little questions here.
Yeah.
How much have these two, are these two the only tenant organizers we have that we use on staff?
Yes.
And over the past four years, how much have we paid them? I don't know if you know for the whole time or per year than ballpark?
The amount that's been utilized, I believe, has been around thirty-five thousand for the entire one-year span.
For one-year span?
Yeah, depending on--
Going back?
Yeah.
Is that what you anticipate in the future, or is it, are you thinking that's a different number?
No, I think that's what's budgeted. If--
It was thirty-five, and this is for thirty?
This, this is--
My recollection was they lowered their price. It had been thirty-five, and this is for thirty.
Okay, that's close enough for my, maybe you can clarify that. But as I'm going through the rest, is it true that the tenant organizers help tenants both with purchase of apartment buildings and understanding rent stabilization and how to comply with it? Or is it that they focus on purchase, trying to purchase buildings?
It's in terms of addressing all the issues that the tenants may have in that particular building, like they help them to understand the process of COLDA, you know, how to, you know, file complaints with us. They get pro bono attorneys for the tenants when they may need them, you know, at a COLDA hearing. And they also assist them with getting development experts if the property's being sold. In terms of rent stabilization, I mean, staff would probably explain to the tenants more about the rent stabilization program.
Okay. I know that sometimes if a group, any group is going to purchase a building, they'll need a legal structure to do so. They'll need a legal structure and significant, sometimes significant help in understanding how they can bring finances together, how to build community wealth, to put it back into their own community. And so I see here that these two have expertise in organizing and real estate development. Do they also have then expertise in how to form a structure so that the tenants can purchase the buildings?
Initially, they would give them guidance on that, and then they call in. You know, what they usually help the tenants do is to put out an RFP for developers, who would, you know, give proposals on what, you know, what the financial situation would be for the particular property. So they're instrumental in getting developers to come in to give their proposals to the tenants, and the tenant association makes that decision.
So the, let me, that's interesting, and let me just repeat it so that I'm sure I understand it. The tenants put an RFP out to a developer who comes in, buys the property as a, in a facilitating kind of way, so that the tenants can actually own the property, but convert it in some way, setting up, does it get converted to condos, or is it a co-op, or does that depend?
It actually depends. I mean, the ones that have gone through the process here are condominiums.
I see.
But, you know, if the tenants opt to convert it to a co-op, then, you know, Roseanne has experience in that field, and she would, you know, be able to, you know, advise them on, you know, who the lenders could possibly be for such a project.
I see. So in the, I'm sorry, I'm asking so much question, so many questions here, but I'm very curious about this. And outside of the rent stabilization, the tenant capacity building can then lead to a conversion to co-ops of a building?
It could.
As opposed to just a sale to keep it in the rental market?
Yes. Right. If the tenants decide they don't want to purchase the property, but, you know, are possibly at the table, they're given a seat at the table, when, let's say there's a third-party contract for, you know, multifamily property, they sometimes can, you know, put in their voices to get certain things done in the property for someone who will eventually buy the property.
I see. So there are a couple of paths. One is it stays at an apartment building, and their voices are heard. Another is they actually gather enough money to purchase the building, it becomes a condo, and they own the condos individually.
That happened, actually, to a property on Flower Avenue, eighty-five oh eight Flower Avenue, that eventually was sold to Montgomery Housing Partnership. The tenants exercised their right to purchase, but assigned their right to the Montgomery Housing Partnership.
Okay, final questions, back to the money part. In the past, have there been instances where buildings were converted to condos, and that, in fact, brought us a sum of money in the form of property taxes that weren't coming from this building previously? But now what I'm getting at is, is it a good investment of our thirty thousand dollars in addition to building tenant capacity?
Well, I'm not familiar what the tax rate would be for individual condo units as compared to, for instance, a multifamily property. I think our finance department would probably be more familiar with that.
Okay, well, that's maybe an auxiliary question I don't really, we don't need answered. And the final one is, if we agree to this thirty-five thousand, thirty or thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure every year, and we really get into a tight budget squeeze, what are your opinions, this is probably to Sarah, would we be able to find thirty-five thousand dollars in the housing and community development budget to make up for that expenditure?
Included in your FY-ten budget for this year, we have thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted, and that's already gone through the council's review process. The proposal that was submitted by Ms. Look and Mr. Cristaldo indicates that they anticipate, based on the work plan that we have included within the request for proposals, that their cost to, for this particular project would be roughly thirty thousand.
Okay.
So the way the ordinance is intended is that each year, depending upon what the council has determined during its budgeting process, that if there are funds that have been set aside for this particular activity, that the contract would be renewed. So it's, there are two different things that we look at when we go through and would recommend renewal or not renewal of the contract. One would be, is the money set aside or budgeted for that specific activity, and then look at performance as well. Historically, they have generally come under the amount that we've included within the budget each year as the council reviews how much money we have available for contracts. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. That's good enough.
Can I just get a clarification on what you just said? So this contract for thirty thousand would be expended in FY-ten or eleven?
It would be a carryover, just because of the timing of it. We have included within the FY-ten budget thirty-five thousand. A portion of that was expended under their current contract, and with the balance coming up under their preceding contract. We have, within all of our contracts that we execute, an out clause, if you will, where if there are circumstances beyond anyone's control, we can give them a notice that we need to terminate the contract. So, for example, if in FY-eleven, you elected not to include funding in the affordable housing budget for this type of activity, we would know that far in advance, that we would be able to give them notice that we're terminating the contract because of budgetary issues.
Well, to wrap up then, I'm going to, I intend to vote for it because I believe it builds community wealth. This is the little buzzword that I use, and I think that putting wealth in hands of people who are tenants is a very good idea.
And I'll just say that I agree with the comments by Councilmember Snipper, Councilmember Schultz, and Councilmember Robinson. And I think back to when, before we had this contract and these organizers, and an opportunity came up for tenants to buy their building, and Councilmember Elrich and myself were the ones who had to do a lot of the tenant organizing, and work with them and pro bono attorneys and some folks at the county. And it was a long, arduous process, but it had a very good result, and that was twenty-two and twenty-four Manor Circle. So I have an idea of the kind of work that it can take to do this, and I think the results in that case would answer Councilmember Robinson's question about whether this kind of brings in more revenue to the city. I think it would tend to, because we know that multifamily buildings are assessed based on their income-generating ability, and condos are assessed based on market. And because of rent stabilization and less opportunity to make money, we know that multifamily buildings generate less taxes than they would if they were condos. So I think, in general, the answer would be, yes, it does generate more money, but it also gives the people who live there more of a stake in the community, an ownership stake. They feel like they belong more and have a stake in what's going on in the whole community, and get more involved. And I think it's good whether that happens or whether it stays as a tenant-occupied rental building. And I would agree with the comment that it isn't just about whether it's condo conversion, it can just be, in the case of difficulties with a building, with a owner who may be in trouble, I know we have one or two of those now, one in particular in Councilmember Snipper's ward, where the owner intended to convert it. That probably isn't happening anymore, but the, in the end, I'm not sure the status now, but the idea was that the tenants might all be on the street or transferred to other buildings because of the difficulties in that building and how it has transpired. And so having people who are able to do this kind of work, I think, is very valuable, and I'll be voting for this. Councilmember Clay?
I would concur that to the extent that they are successful at making homeowners out of people and transferring what were rental units into homeowner units, that the ultimate, there will ultimately be a property tax gain to the city. It'd be interesting to know, if you had legitimate data, what the comparison would be to what happens in the county around the tenant opportunity to purchase law versus what happens in the city. It could certainly be, I would be interested in that. I think that would be actually a factor that could weigh in that. So I'd like, if this comes up again in four years, and I'm still a council member, I think it'd be interesting to see what that is. And I think just in general, it would be interesting to see it. And the other thing is that the New Hampshire Towers, although it's in Ward Six and not in Ward Two, gosh, they had a lot of problems, I think, with their condo conversion. And what I mostly heard from people is that they were unsuccessful at being able to purchase the units. And I think it's maybe something to, something to look at. It doesn't seem like it's an area where they've been successful, although they may have been successful in the other six places. That one seems like it's been particularly difficult. And I think would actually indicate that maybe what we need is more than the capacity building and the organizing, if we were actually going to make a meaningful attempt to help people if they cope with the issue that there isn't capital available. There's hardly capital available for me to refinance my house at my federal salary income and with my credit score. And I'm a second-time homeowner, and I own an apartment, or a rental house in College Park, you know, and it's difficult, because there just isn't money, there's no money in the system right now. So, you know, the other things we're going to do it, we ought to do it right and actually make it a meaningful opportunity to purchase. But I'm still going to vote against it.
And if I can just make a suggestion for a possible amendment that might address some of the concerns about the four years on this. I heard some discussion there a couple of minutes ago from Sarah Danes, that it sounds like there's some protections built in, in terms of budget. But I wonder if the council might want to change Section One of this ordinance to say the city council may authorize, oh, sorry, Section Two, the city council may authorize a renewal as appropriate of the contract for three additional twelve-month terms. That way, we will, of necessity, come back to this--
At the budget.
At the budget to know, it's like, okay, are you, you know, are you going to fund this? And if you do, then, you know, the renewal will happen. I don't know whether that gets a little bit technical term hinky, or whether it's better left alone and flagging it for the city manager.
I think it, Mayor, I think it would be valuable to address the concern that Councilmember Clay put in, and that is, we consider this within the priorities of other expenditures as we consider the budget in this upcoming year. So I would second that.
I was just going to say, I think technically, any contract that the city has is contingent upon the city council authorizing funding.
Right.
So, I mean, we could certainly--
Just like the federal government, if it's funded, it continues.
I mean, I think if it would make the council more comfortable, you could simply change Section Two to read that I'm authorized to renew as appropriate and contingent upon funding from the council or budgetary funding, or something like that. I think it's self-evident. But if that, obviously, we cannot continue a contract for which there's no funding.
Right. I'm just trying to figure out the best way to kind of flag it for the council for the budget discussion, so that we make a conscious decision. And that way, we've considered it within all of the parameters of the budget and our priorities. And just because of the particular circumstances that we could be facing, I wouldn't ordinarily-- because of the particular circumstances that we could be facing, I wouldn't ordinarily try and tighten it down like this, but I think in this case, it might be helpful.
Because of the amount of money associated with the contract, it is always referenced in the documentation that's provided to the council about the housing and community development budget.
Okay.
Well, I, I think the reason that we have tended to use this language, and it was also in the ordinance that the council adopted last week relative to the indefinite quantities contract for street work, is simply so that we are not going out on an annual basis and having to secure new bids. So for that reason, I think because the budgetary process provides some, obviously, a very definite level of council involvement, I would not strike the clause altogether unless we are to go out annually on bids. That's just a very time-consuming process and somewhat costly. Good deal.
I will, I wanted to find out whether it would be helpful to do that or not. I think, it sounds like we have, we have enough things to key the discussion in the budget, that we'll, we'll be able to deal with it that way, and it sounds like there's a good reason for procurement purposes to leave the language in Section 2 alone. So I will, I will step back from my suggestion. It was not a motion for an amendment. Any other comments? Okay, any public comment on this ordinance? Who wants to step into this? Anybody? Okay, then I believe we need to call the roll, since it's a little reading ordinance. So we'll do it again, and listen closely for the votes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
I'm staying.
He's recused, he's recused.
He's recused, so he doesn't get called on.
I called you, but you're not here.
You just skip over him, I think, is how we decided to do this.
Okay. Councilmember Clay?
Nay.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes four to two. Thank you all. We now move to a second reading ordinance authorizing appointment of specialized counsel for labor and employment law matters.
The pilot agreement.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I, there's too much reading on this agenda. Second reading ordinance modifying the pilot agreement for 8508 and 8510 Flower Avenue. We discussed this at first reading, we had extensive discussions before that.
Made him go back and do it again.
Yes. And, and they, and they stayed very late last week, and suffered through that discussion again.
But I have lots of questions.
No, no, move the ordinance to the consent agenda.
Move to Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Does anybody dare have any comments on this one? Are there any public comments? Second reading ordinance, so, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes six to one. Now moving to agenda item number three, second reading ordinance authorizing appointment of specialized counsel for labor and employment law matters. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Is there any discussion on that? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Will the court please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We now move to second reading ordinance admitting Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2, to remove Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee as a statutory committee. Somebody like to move the ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Is there any discussion? We've had extensive discussions on this one as well. Any public comment on this ordinance? Will the court please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We now move to the consent agenda. As three items, a resolution awarding funds for the Small Community Grants Program, a resolution urging residents to shop locally and support local businesses, and a resolution providing for the city council's holiday recess. Would somebody like to move the consent?
Move the consent. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Let's take a short break, and we will come back for our remaining item, which is a work session, discussion on follow-up.
So that 4.3 million could be an entirely different number today, but it certainly has trended somewhat upward since the date of the valuation. The recommended employer contribution rate for the next fiscal year is 34.82 percent. To put that kind of in a comparison to this year, the FY-2010 rate that is reflected in the budget was 34.7 percent. So essentially, the contribution rate that is recommended for next fiscal year is essentially flat, which is good news. Particularly, I think, for Councilmember Schultz's benefit, who hasn't had to talk about the pension plan for the last few years, as we have during the budget process. This is a plan that has had a higher-than-expected rate of disability. That did result in a pretty significant jump in the contribution rate over the last few years. In FY-2009, the city contributed 31 percent to the plan because of the underfunded status, which I'll touch on momentarily. We did contribute more last fiscal year than was actuarially recommended or required. The actual rate was 29.13 percent, so we contributed roughly 2 percent more than what we were obligated to do. Basically, the jump between FY-09 and FY-10 was attributable to a couple of things. Investment performance, stocks were taking a beating generally over the last few years, and as I mentioned, we had a higher-than-expected rate of disability. It has been trending out over the life of the plan, almost to one disability per year. Earlier this year, the council, as recommended by the Retirement Plan Committee for the police pension plan, did approve a modification to that plan to address the rate of disability, making some slight modifications. My guess is that that probably did keep the rate that is recommended for next year from being higher than the 34 points, 34.82 percent. From a unfunded actuarial accrued liability standpoint, as of June 30th, that was approximately $10.3 million. By comparison, for June 30th of '08, that number was $8.9 million. That increases was not unexpected. One of the things they do is look at those employees who have been in active status, and as you move closer to retirement, the city's accrued liability is, is naturally going to increase. Certainly, the unfunded amount also is somewhat a reflection of the decline in plan assets as well. The funded ratio as of June 30th of '09 was 28.1 percent. If you look at that same figure for June 30th of '08, it was 33.6 percent. Once again, that is somewhat attributable to the decline in market assets. So that's just sort of a, kind of a brief snapshot of what is in the actuarial evaluation for the police pension plan. Just wanted to highlight some things, particularly the recommended employer contribution rate for next year.
If you could just remind us, I'm trusting my memory here, and I'm not sure that I'm accurate on this, that the, this plan was established in 2001?
That's correct.
And previously, there had been a different plan, where the police entered the state police pension plan?
The city sworn officers, which are the only ones that are covered by this pension plan, were previously part of the state plan. I was not here at the time, but my understanding is that the city elected to form its own plan in part in order to offer a retirement at an earlier service date than was otherwise provided for in the state plan.
Because it seems to me that the state plan was 30-year, and
It's 25 now.
And we were offering 25, and it was a, it was, it, at, at the time, it seemed like the only way to go.
I think that's correct. One of the things, kind of, over the last few years, the council may recall, is when the Retirement Plan Committee, I believe it was in March of '08, had recommended a modification to the plan because of the rate of disability. That was an issue, we had spent approximately a year talking to Local 400, which is the bargaining unit that represents our sworn police officers. That recommendation of the Retirement Plan Committee was delayed in terms of its implementation to allow us to discuss this issue with the union, and we spent that year trying to examine what other options there might be. Rather than modifying the plan, we did look at rejoining the state plan. The state would only take those employees who have not yet retired or are not in pay status, and by the time we had to provide benefits to those people who are already retired, whether for disability or other reasons, that translated into an effective contribution rate of almost 46 percent. That was obviously not viable from a financial standpoint, so we proceeded with modifying the plan with the union's concurrence.
Two questions. One, the rebate formula with the county, do they rebate us for the cost of providing for the pension?
I'm gonna look to the chief, but I think they look at what their cost would be for, it translates into what they would otherwise pay their officers. Obviously, they have their own pension costs, so that translates into the rebate per officer that would be assigned to Tacoma Park if we got service from the county.
So their rebate per officer is like a fully loaded rebate, full pension?
Yes, yes.
And I believe the county is self-funded.
And the county has 20-year retirement. It's a, as the chief, in attached, it's, it's a very good pension plan, since he has a retiree of the county.
They actually change the retirement system from the one I retired under. They have a, they don't have a defined payout anymore.
And then, just so I under, I wanna make sure I understand this, and I was looking at this, on page 7, you see this unfunded liability number, and it's $10 million. And so, I just wanna understand, is that really $10 million in today's dollars? Because that could be pretty scary if somebody looked at that, you know, and she doesn't look at that. And right now, it's saying, we have 40 million fund for the valued assets, and the total accrued liability is 14.3.
Right. If you, if I may, Councilmember Wright, probably refer the council to page 14, this is actually a required schedule under the GASP rule, it's GASP 25. And the council had had some discussion, I believe, actually, you might have been the person to raise this question last year. And basically, it's referred to the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, and that number is essentially taking the value of the plan assets, less the actuarial accrued liability. And the way that the actuary had explained it to me last year, and I anticipated that there might be a question about this, he suggested that you all think of it as a cost based on the valuation assumptions, and that's gonna take into account, what is the expected rate of return, when people are expected to pass away, disability rates, and it's whatever would be required to pay for benefits earned through, in this case, July 1st of 2009. So it's basically saying, if we had to have all the money that would be necessary to pay benefits out under this plan when people are expected to retire, that would come to $10.3 million.
In the future, though?
In the future.
It's not as though everyone retired today?
That is correct.
Okay.
It is saying that, use of chief, since he's here, what their mortality tables would show, no offense, chief, for the chief's life expectancy based on his age and his gender, what is the likelihood that he or other officers might go out on disability. So it's basically accruing that benefit over their expected service and their expected lifetime.
And then bringing it back to net present value?
Correct.
So in essence, it is pretty true. Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
Chief, can, can you tell us a little bit more about this no-defined payment that the county has? What does that mean?
The county now has a plan where they take, the employee can elect to contribute. I'm sorry.
I'm looking at our TV guide.
My understanding, and they started to say, well, I take it, I think we're doing it just as I was leaving, the county now does not offer, like what I have, is this defined payment. The employee elects how much money he wants to put in for a defined contribution. In other words, what they get is, they'll invest their money and they get so much back. It's like a, like a deferred account, basically.
That's like a 401K.
Yeah, that'd be the best way to describe it.
So each officer has his, his or her own sort of fund, and if you fund that fund?
Well, they contribute. They contribute, and the county matches some of it. It's nothing like what they have been doing before.
I, I think
My wife is a member, a teacher. She has, she's a member of what's called TIAA.
My husband, along with that.
Maybe that's what we're talking about here, is that each, each individual has a fund, and the contribution made by the, by us as the city would be predictable in that when we make the contribution, and then there's, that, that fund is what the person has as they go forward.
It is a difference, I mean, in pension lingo, it's a difference between having a defined benefit plan such as the state plan or the police pension plan, where the city is essentially guaranteeing a benefit tied to certain parameters, and usually, it's gonna be your salary averaged over, you know, your highest salary averaged over three years is the typical one, versus a defined contribution plan, where the employer's obligation is, is limited to the contribution that is made in a particular fiscal year, whether it's matched or not. That is the extent of the employer's obligation, and the employee directs those investments.
And have there been, has there been analysis on how those two plans play out in terms of not only risk that the, the city, in this case, would takes on, but also the value that can accrue for the, for the individuals? Has there been an analysis? I'm sure there's been some analysis of that.
Well, as an employer, I, what I would generally say is governmental plans have historically been defined benefit, I would say, in, in almost all cases. Those are going to be more expensive to a city or an employer than a defined contribution plan. One of the challenges with defined contribution plans, and I've been in those most of my career, is the extent of employee education. So certainly, it puts some burden on an employer to try to educate employees so they can make appropriate investment choices.
When you say, and that's defined contribution?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And that's what we're talking about at the county level, not the city level?
That would surprise me, that it's a defined contribution plan.
It's not defined, I mean, it's
It said, there's not a defined payment.
It's not a defined, the employee elects how much they wanna put into it.
Okay, but they are guaranteed a, a benefit, just so I'm clear, based on their service and income?
No, it's based on what
So the county has to switch from defined benefit
Right.
To defined contribution.
Right.
Defined benefit to defined contribution, that's the difference.
Which is what most employers have been doing over the last 20 Which is what most employers have been doing over the last 10, 20 years?
But we have not yet.
Correct.
And have we discussed that, and will we discuss that?
I, I think that is a, a decision. I think the way our, it is not an option through the, for the civilian employee through the state retirement system, it's simply a defined benefit plan. I would imagine, if the city wished to move in that direction, that would be a collective bargaining issue, and my expectation is that we would encounter some resistance.
Okay, I understand, and I bring it up just because I want to know what, what our options are.
Yeah.
But like Josh, when I look at a $10 million hole in the, hole in the budget, or it's not a hole in the budget, but a $10 million liability that we have.
Correct.
And that's based on a market position, which we're not all that sure of over time. And like, and I try to draw a worst-case scenario, what if the market completely tanks? You know, do we have any, you know, where is the wiggle room? So that's, that's why I'm bringing up this as an option.
No, it's, I worked in a community, I had just started right after they had made the conversion to a defined contribution plan. And certainly, from an employer, your economic risk, if you want to call it, that falls in any given budgetary year, and that is the extent of your obligation.
Right.
So you don't have any unfunded liability down the road.
Right.
And that's why it's appealing to many jurisdictions.
Could I just add a point? When they switched over this plan, it was still the collective bargaining, and I can speak to the police process because it was a part of that. It was a long process to get to that point, because they started changing the system, and they collectively bargained it. For the police union to go to that, they got other things in return, which are very favorable to them. So I'm not sure if you, if you had asked the county now to weigh it out, would it be, you know, because they got some favorable things at the table that you won't find in many police departments. And that's why it's such a big issue in the county now with the deficit. They negotiated some favorable contracts to get that. But, yeah, it doesn't affect me, because obviously, I've been gone for quite a while. I'm under the all program, but I know it's the county's goal to get everybody switched over there, which I think they've clearly done by now. There's just a few old timers left that are still in the old system.
And that, and this is a different conversation than the conversation we had not so long ago about disability. That's a, the disability question is entirely different. Am I right?
It's, it's not an entirely separate conversation, because certainly, the, the fact that this plan, which is very young, and that's one of the comments I would make as you look at the funded ratio, you know, this plan has not been around very long in pension terms. It's an extremely young pension plan. So that takes some time. But the fact that we have had so many officers go out on disability certainly has impacted what our liability has. The younger those people go out, and we do have provisions in place to ensure they are disabled every year, but if you have someone who goes out on disability, let's just say at the age of 45, and is expected to live to 80 or 85, that does impact your funding levels and your liability.
I see.
So it's, it's not separate. When this plan was set up, as I understand it, the expected rate of disability was about one every three years. Over the life of this plan to date, it's been about one a year. And that has had a significant impact on the funding status of this plan.
Thank you. And what's the history? What were you doing before this plan was established, 2001?
The officers were part of the state plan.
They were part of the state.
Which was a defined benefit plan.
Right, yes.
And if somebody serves on the police force for five years, 10 years, say, and retire, you know, leaves the force at 40 and goes and gets a job somewhere else, do they then, when they're retired, retired at whatever age, 65 or something, do they collect money, some percentage from this plan of their...
The contributions that they have made, this is a, excuse me, a contributory pension plan, always, or they are, so they can take those out upon termination.
If they had five years, they could not collect retirement from the city until they turn 62.
But they'd, they'd collect something when they're 62?
If, if they left it in the plan, I believe they could collect it at 62. You can correct me.
I'm just going to go back and do my math.
But it wouldn't be much.
It wouldn't be.
I, I think the, the...
Honestly, Councilman Wright, I don't, generally, people, if they leave before, as a younger age, you're going to take the money with them.
Yeah, I, I think the thing that's most important to keep in mind here is that, as the city manager said, it's a young plan. So when you establish it, you essentially dump a lot of liability that's front-loaded into the plan, and over time, it gets better.
If, in answer to the question, it's, this is on page 10, and you can just read it at your leisure, but the normal retirement plate, age of the plan, is 25 years of service or age 62, five years of service, whichever comes earlier. So if someone had served five years, they would be entitled to something at age 62. Certainly, that's going to be minimal.
Yeah.
The likelihood that someone served five years and then moved on to another jurisdiction probably implies that he or she was probably a younger officer, who probably would not be as, making a significant amount of money. So that would just translate into a lower-level benefit.
Right. And I guess the observation there is a lot of businesses converted to the contribution version because it was rare then that people were working, you know, people didn't work at businesses for 40 years like they used to. And so you have people who might work at five different businesses over a 20-year period, and the model where you contribute is more portable.
Correct.
For our officers, probably a lot of them come here, work for many, many years, and then retire.
I, I think we're headed in that category now with, with, I think it's a good benefit plan and things that allow our officers. I think those that have been here, like the mayor and Terry, know that we used to lose people. I mean, I've got over, there's probably one, two, three people that could retire over the next six, seven years. Other than that, you'd have to go another 20 years before somebody would go. So we're still, we're a young department, and I don't think we're going to lose people now, because I think the benefit plan's a good plan.
You think that that's a heck of a good selling point when you're trying to hire a, a high-quality candidate?
Well, you know, I think you got to emphasize, when people go to the other plan, which the county did, and I'm sitting here thinking about all the things they negotiated, the county has a very, which I didn't get to participate in, favorable drop plan now, where in the last three years, they can make quite a bit of money, which they then throw into their contribution plan. By the way, the drop works in the county, and that's been a good plan for them. They also get, generally, people will leave at 25 years as a result of the drop plan, so they don't have people that are maxing them out anymore. But I think, it's still early, but I think the county in the long run, well, it's a favorable plan for them, but then you have to realize they had a pretty good plan, as I can attest, you know, they had for many years, but they, they just changed, like Barb says, a lot, most businesses are doing the same thing now. But the plan we have is generally what's in most police departments today. You have to realize, the union in Montgomery County has one of the most favorable packages in the United States, and that's a fact.
The other thing I would just mention, I think some of the council members are aware of this, but, and this is not uncommon in my experience, but our police officers do not participate in social security. So the city is not contributing the 6.2 percent for anyone who is hired after April 1st of 1986. The federal law does require that they participate in Medicare. So I guess when you look at the number, it's certainly still a significant percentage of payroll, but we are not also contributing to social security for the FICA.
That makes a big difference.
So. I guess any other questions just about the police plan? I just wanted to, just touch briefly on an issue involving the state retirement plan. And this is something that we touch on briefly each year during the budget process, but we have not spent a lot of time on it, and I just wanted to flag this for the council and also make our recommendation. The mayor may, or Councilmember Siemens may actually have to give me some history on this, but I know there was a time when there was a change in the state retirement plan, and there, many jurisdictions had a deficit to address, and they had different options in terms of how to do that. In the case of Tacoma Park, we elected a 40-year amortization period to pay off that deficit. The way it was structured was that our payment, initial payment would increase by 15 percent for the first five years, and then 5 percent thereafter, to sort of put that into context. The payment for FY 2010 is just under $79,000. Based on the most recent information we have from the state, and we are, have requested an updated figure, the deficit that the city is attempting to pay off is in the range of $1.14 million. The outstanding balance and the way the interest is calculated is that the state retirement plan essentially bases the outstanding balance and takes into account what they, what their actuarial assumption is in terms of the rate of return on their investments. And that's 7.75 percent. I had fairly recently had some discussions with someone at the state retirement plan about this, and I guess my recommendation would be, if the council concurs, that we maybe look at addressing that deficit in some way other than this 40-year payoff period, because essentially, the rate of return we are paying for the state far exceeds either the cost of financing at this time or the rate of return we're making on our own investments. So I think there may be a better financial way of handling this deficit than continuing to make these installment payments every year. And I think in the long run, it may be more financially advantageous to the city to do that. So one, I wanted just to flag the issue for you tonight, because I don't think we've spent a lot of time, and to make sure it's on everybody's radar screen, but also to see if there's concurrence from the council to maybe examine some, some other options of addressing that deficit.
And my assumption is that if we were to do that, that might be a call on, on appropriated reserves.
It, it is possibly a draw on the, you know, undesignated fund balance. I think there may also be an option just to look at conventional financing, which is, as we talked about, is pretty inexpensive, and certainly probably less expensive than what we are currently paying the state for the benefit of doing installment payments.
And, and...
Either option. I think you should probably look at both.
The little bit of history that I can recall about this is that the sense was, when this happened, that it was like the state actuaries woke up and went, oh, gee, we need to recalculate this stuff. We've been going along with the, you know, like, we haven't recalculated it in 10 years or whatever it is. And so everybody had an unfunded, most everybody had...
It's pretty much everybody looking at the state valuation report.
And at the time, I think the municipalities that had the biggest deficits were Hagerstown and somebody else in Tacoma Park. And Hagerstown took the lead, and we joined with them, and I believe two years in a row were able to get the state to basically write down the amount that we owed by maybe a half million dollars or a million dollars.
Yeah, I think that was helping with Larry Lovett.
Each time, yes. And so we owed way more than this, and we're...
That's my understanding.
We were helped along in those two years, and we're left with this, and it was essentially, it was kind of dumped in everybody's lap as, oh, here it is, we haven't been paying attention, or we goofed, or whatever it was, and here's this, and you have to deal with it now.
Yeah, the, the information for, just for example, for the same time period that I quoted, the 1.4 for Tacoma Park, Hagerstown had about a $5 million deficit. Cumberland had about a $3 million. Prince George's County government had almost a $30 million deficit. And then some of the school, school districts had fairly significant deficits that they were working to pay off. So I really just wanted to know, you say, to see if there was at least a council concurrence to maybe examine some other options, and we could try to bring something back to you after the first of the year.
That would be helpful, I certainly agree on that.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing I was hoping to do this night, I know the council, to the extent Papa wanted to get a jump on talking about budgetary issues, and the chief and I have been talking about two specific programs or initiatives and have a recommendation this evening. One is C-Safe, and the other is police accreditation, and I'll turn that over to the chief.
The C-Safe program, which has obviously been very successful, directions changed over the last two years. State has went, where it started out, it was more of a community outreach and working on the community, and it's now moved, the emphasis is crime analysis, which was a major emphasis last year with all types of training for our command staff, our first-line supervisors, and our crime analysts, and towards the arrest of parole and probation violators. In last year's grant, we, we reduced the employee salaries to fif, to...
15 hours a week?
I'm at 25.
They're, we reduced their hours, so they're now part-time employees. In reviewing the program with the scandal and keeping up with it and looking at what the state's doing, I would expect that they will continue the emphasis towards crime enforcement, not community outreach. We budgeted $15,000. That basically goes towards salary and rental space. We got a little money this year for overtime for us, Montgomery County, and Prince George's County. I expect, if there is funds, and obviously, we've cut back already on those funds, that there'll be very little, and I would expect with the state's problems as they are already, and what they've already cut, there'll be some money, but it probably won't be enough to continue with the program. It's my belief right now, with the current focus of the C-Safe program, which is towards picking up parole and probation violators, that the day-to-day activities of our department can take it over, and we can eliminate those two positions. And obviously, I, it's with a heavy heart that I recommend this, but I think I've got to look at my budget like everyone else does, start making some hard decisions on where we're going with the current staffing and what we have in the department. Mary and Gresham have done an outstanding job, since this, and other people that have worked in it before. But with the program the way it's going now, we really, in my opinion, do not need to continue it, because it's not going to be community outreach. If the council wants to go about it in a different way, that'd be fine, but we're coming up on tight times, and I'm looking where I can better use my resources in different ways. As much as I'd hate to see them go, I think I have a responsibility to our citizens and to you all to make this recommendation.
I think it's, I think it's horrible. It's been a great program, and it's really accomplished a lot, and it's something that isn't built overnight. It's taken years of hard work to get us to where we are today. And I'm glad to hear your assurance that we can continue without that help, but...
I mean, the state has changed the emphasis, and when you change emphasis, then you have to go in the direction that the state's going. I mean, Mary warned me two years ago that they were really going towards crime analysis, which was a great plus for our department. We've gotten a lot of valuable training, software, and things that you would have never gotten before from the state on crime analysis. Outreach has not been their emphasis. Their emphasis is towards law enforcement, arresting parole, probation violators, and doing what we can on crime trends, and that's been the governor's emphasis since he came in. And that's when we reduced the program back this year. We knew that there was a good possibility, and I, I just don't see us, I think the money can be better spent in other parts of the budget and continue to do our community outreach. Things like with, you know, the crossroads, we will continue to do, and the National Night Out, we're going to continue to do. We just want a national award for it, so I'm sure not going to stop doing that program.
Sure, I understand that. I guess my concern is that, and I think you said the same thing, is that we can't enforce our way out of the problems. We really need to be working with the community and to have programs that really help to lead people away from crime rather than just try to keep people from committing crimes by arresting them when they do. And I think that's one of the great values that I see with the C-Safe program, and whether the state drops it, I think, I think that approach to reducing crime in Tacoma Park is important. I would like to see the, the police department do more of that, not just in the crossroads area. And I understand that funding's a problem, but I would be, I think, more supportive of fewer officers doing law enforcement and more people doing crime prevention.
Well, I guess my response to that is, you know, I, I have to hear from across the city, and I think there's not one person sitting at this table that doesn't read the same listservs and hear from the same residents that I do. The main concern in this community right now is the safety of our residents, and the safety of our residents, they're not going to get robbed, they're not going to get burglarized, and their car's not going to get broken into. And anyone that knows me, Councilman Siemens, knows my commitment to community policing, and that's what's got me to where I sit today, because I've been successful with it. But I, I serve, I think, the residents and the priorities that you folks bring to me, and it's reducing crime and making our community safe.
No, I, I...
And, but you have to also realize is, the governor has went away from outreach. It's towards enforcement, which I think he's reading what the residents want. We, I have the philosophy, our department has that philosophy, but our main goals and emphasis right now is on the prevention of crime, working with our citizen to prevent it, but locking up bad guys and getting them off the street and making it safer. And I don't think anybody up here will disagree with me.
No, I think, and it gets always a difficult argument to say, I don't want you to enforce laws, and I'm certainly not implying that in any way.
I know that.
And I think the, you know, we all know the community appreciates the... And I think the, you know, we all know the community appreciates the improvements we've seen in the police department since you've been chief.
Appreciate it.
And I think the, there's been a large improvement in enforcement of the laws in Tacoma Park with your, under your direction. But I've been disappointed that we don't see more improvement in, and I think it's, it's a philosophical difference. I think, I would like to see a stronger role that the city government plays in crime prevention. And it's not just, you know, community-oriented policing, but it's, it's the type of work that we see the SeaSafe group doing, reaching out to the community and helping provide alternatives and programs that teach people better, better ways. And if anything, I would like to see the program increase to where we're, you know, helping to, being, where the city is being a catalyst for bringing vocational training programs to the community so that people who feel so desperate they have to commit crimes are instead feeling that there is an opportunity to earn a living in a law, legal way.
Well, I mean, some of the things you suggest, I don't think always fall into the police department, to be honest with you. There's a lot more in community outreach. I've said that since day one, but I think I know what my marching orders are from this council, from the community, and that's where we put the emphasis. And I think we need to continue. I think all of us feel some of the pain of the victims of crimes. And I see the victims that come in the doors of our station. I know the fear that goes across a listserv at night when something like this occurs. As you pointed out to me so candidly, yes, we just had another street robbery tonight where a victim was walking home down a road. And when one of those occurs, I know what it does to our community because I read every email that we get and we get a lot of feedback. And I think right now, I think there's limited funds. I think you have to pick the emphasis. If you give me funds, obviously, for more outreach, and obviously I'm going to do that, but I think right now, where we're going and where we're going to have to go with this budget, I'm trying to be proactive and I'm trying to set plans that will be in place. We have to, if we apply for the grant, we need to know ahead of time so we can start planning now. So that's why I bring it forth as I do early on before the budget's there because I don't want to put these ladies under false, you know, especially if their job's going to stop on the grand ends this year. I want them to be able to have the opportunity to look elsewhere too because they've served this city in a fantastic style. And for me to say, these are two of my best employees, two people who have represented this city, and I don't think anybody here would argue it. And to lose them is a loss, but we're in reality time and it's, you know, it's what priorities are in the streets right now. And I think it is crime.
And I appreciate your looking at this, thinking of ways that we can decrease our expenses as we move into the next year. And I think you put the thing in the proper perspective, and that is you're following the marching orders that the council has given to the city manager. And I appreciate that. I think that the marching orders should be slightly different.
Okay. Thank you. And just one quick question before I recognize Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Robinson. On the county funding of the $30,000, I'm not sure whether I've heard you say that you have any indication what the county's going to...
I don't have any indication. It's a little too early.
Okay.
I think we're just speculating, given what is happening at the county and the extent of layoffs that are occurring across all county departments, that Chief Manger will be faced with the same choice of what to put forward in his recommendation for his own budget to the county executive.
Right.
I've had preliminary discussions. They've got some much more serious problems than we do. And they're looking at serious layoffs. And I'm just anticipating based on what I know in the past. Tom has not said one way or the other. It's too early to ask him to commit, but I think it's one of the things that will definitely be on the chopping block.
Right. Okay, thanks. Councilmember Wright?
So one, I just want to make sure I fully understand this. In the past, the state actually funded, had grants where you could apply for SeaSafe, but that money could be used for outreach. And now it's still called SeaSafe, but the money has to be used for something else. Is that correct?
Excellent.
Does that make sense? Then I have, I guess I have two comments. One is, because I think Councilmember Siemens talked about two components really there. One is, has to do with things that I think you're probably right are not the responsibility of the police department around, whether it's recreational services or vocational training. And the city faces a challenge in taking, I fully agree with that approach. I think we spend too much money on prisons and not enough money on education, recreation, training for people. It's absolutely true. Tacoma Park, that's not something that, a strategy that can be employed in a small geographic region. Because as you've said to us before, the majority of people who are committing the crimes here are not necessarily people who live in Tacoma Park.
That's correct.
So we could employ every single youth, we could have a training program for every individual in Tacoma Park. And we wouldn't necessarily make a dent in the crime because of that. Now, that's the responsibility of the state. The state and the DC city government should have a different approach to...
Well, the state has changed its approach. It was outreach when it started and now it's changed its approach towards crime enforcement and lockout.
Yeah, no, but the state, you know, I think it's, it costs something like two and a half to three times to incarcerate someone for 20 years as it does to give them a quality education in high school and send them to college, right? So it's, it's a question of like, the state should pay now for its people so that they're not in prison later. That's, but that's not something we're going to be able to change. The second issue, I don't know, which I think has to do more with like direct outreach. And it's the question of whether engagement with the community such that they feel more comfortable with the police department and would share information with the police department about bad guys or things that, that they see going on in the community, that I would argue might make us safer also. I don't know because it seems to me we can't, we, I hear often from residents like, I know the police cars are out there a lot and patrolling as much as they can, but they're not going to be on every street or every corner all the time, right? So it's the, and I don't think it's, you know, it probably varies from neighborhood to neighborhood, right? But that engagement actually having an outreach causes people to be more engaged to the police, give you better tips. So I don't know whether that makes us safer, you know, like that feels like it actually can contribute to the exact charge that we've given you, which is to make residents safe.
Well, I think I can say that we're getting more calls from citizens now than we ever had gotten before. And citizens are getting more involved. And that was the goal when I started here almost three years ago, to, you know, engage our citizens, the guys rolling down their windows, getting out and walking, riding the bikes. And I, it started slow, but I'm starting to see results now because we're starting to make good arrests, good stops with, as a result of calls. I mean, last week is a good example. A thing we were discussing a little bit earlier on Piney Branch, about two or three neighbors called in on the guy going door to door and we caught him. We were able, he was wanted through other criminal offense and we were able to put him away. But we're getting a lot of calls and identifying people that are suspicious now that we weren't getting before. And so I think we're preventing a lot and then we are identifying suspects in the area that we've caught them before, as I've explained to the council. We've caught several people who are known to us, we've arrested, and now we've been able to run their prints. And we're, we're starting to prevent crime. I think it has improved and I think it continues to get better. Just the amount of citizens that want to get in part of our chief's advisory board really encourages me that more people are getting involved and different people, getting a lot more people. There's always been our steady people that have always been on committees here in the city. And there's a new group of people getting involved, which I think is good for the city. The more people we engage, the more people they engage and we get, and we get more. So I think we are accomplishing, is it where I wanted it? No. There's a lot more to do, but I think we're doing, I think we're doing a better job with our citizens calling and I think we're doing a better job with the information.
Right. So I guess my, my point there is just, because I, the number one thing I do hear from people is related to public safety. And so I've said this before and asked the question of, do you have the resources you need? And to me, it's not just the resources of the officer on the street, but it's things like this as well. So I'm not so sure I would say I would cut this program. I understand if you said, hey, chief, we need you to figure out a way to save money, this would be the thing that you'd say, we should cut. But if I came back to you and said, is there value in this? Do you think it makes this safer? I think you'd say, yes, also, right?
Well, there's value in it. The problem I have with it, it's going away from outreach. Mary's in Tacoma Park as such, is not doing outreach. She's working with our heat teams. It's all going towards parole, probation, lockout, arresting people. It's not what they were doing originally when they were doing a lot of work with tenant groups and things like that, or they do some of it. That's not the purpose of the grant now. What we're paying them to do now, it's not that kind of stuff. So that's the thing. It's a matter of what the grant tells us, we can do and what we can't do.
Yeah. I thought, I thought what you were saying was that the grant, the money was, the state money was being used, was required that they do different things. But our, the money we put in was still being used for outreach. But what you're saying is we have to sort of match and do what the state wants us to do, which is not...
Right.
So I, yeah, I see that.
I wouldn't even be here if I thought I could use all the money for outreach. But I can. It's for criminal stuff, well, that's stuff I'm already doing. So when most of the money's going towards salary and it's going towards rental space and we're not doing the things we originally did, we're basically doing crime enforcement, then I think that is a budget issue and that's something you need to look at.
Okay. If I can point out to my colleagues that the clock in the back has stopped. It's now 9:45, not 9:10.
I think it was really early.
And Council, City Manager Matthews.
And I just wanted to clarify, there are city resources currently going towards employee salaries and outreach activities. Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the money you had requested for actual programmatic efforts towards outreach was cut to zero. My recollection is by...
And the SeaSafe grant?
And the SeaSafe grant from the state. So we have filled in some of the gap out of our own, I think the police department's operating budget. And I think the state has also, we do provide both of the SeaSafe contractual employees with some level of benefits. And I believe the state is also only paying for the hours they actually work. So, so there is some city cost associated with it. One of the things the chief and I had talked about is if we do not apply for the grant, you know, the council may wish to consider whether you want to continue allocating the same $15,000 to try to do some outreach efforts. You know, I believe Councilmember Wright, one of the things you're alluding to is in some cities I've worked, we have had a dedicated crime prevention officer. It can be called a community outreach officer in some communities. That is, both positions are something the chief and I have, have talked about. You know, quite frankly, I think his officers are hitting the street and dealing with serious crime issues. I think it's a nice thing to have. Many communities view that as kind of a luxury, if you will, that they just simply cannot afford. I think the only issue, I think, this evening that we're hoping to get some direction on is whether we should be pursuing another SeaSafe grant, given some of the uncertainty at the county level and the change in state programmatic focus.
But it sounds like what we've just heard is if we were to, if we were to say, yes, apply for the grant, it still wouldn't address the needs that we think need to be addressed.
That's correct.
Therefore, it seems obvious that we should say, no, don't apply for that grant.
I think that's the chief's recommendation and it's mine as well, but I think that's ultimately a council decision.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. As an outcome, I'll, I'll vote that direction. I am curious, at one point you said, these are things that other departments might be better off, this, this role of outreach might be something that another department might be better off filling. And so that's a discussion for another time. And City Manager Matthews just alluded to that as I, as I, as I hear it.
Well, and I, and I think the other point that the chief and I have talked extensively about, and I think it would echo what Councilmember Wright has already indicated, I, the council could certainly allocate money to some of the vocational training. And in fact, we've done some of that in the past to benefit our own residents. I think if the council wishes to go in that direction, I think that, you know, is certainly a good thing to do. I would just hate to see you go into that with any expectations that you're going to see any measurable change in crime because I think it is affected by so many parameters beyond our own borders and whatever services we would directly offer our own residents. I'm not saying that it's not a good thing to do. I just don't think it's going to impact the job that the chief and his staff have to address day in and day out.
Okay, thanks.
Horace Schultz?
Just for purposes of framing this, this discussion a little better, if, if we were to magically be able to fund the money, and we're not, but what would it cost to go back to recreate the SeaSafe that we were operating in when it was in a crime prevention mode a couple of years ago? If we were to say, do it all on our own? I just want to get an idea of what the funding of that would be.
I'm going to look, I mean, I know it has changed. I think at one, going back maybe about two years, I believe we were getting about $90-some thousand from the state.
That was just from the state, but that's in support to state.
Right.
It would just depend on what you would want in the program. Would it be housed in the police department? Would it be housed outside? I mean, there's so many factors, but it would be between a hundred to 150,000 depending upon what you wanted.
Okay, thank you very much. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, so am I, is it a correct assumption that the council feels that the direction on this particular piece should be not to apply for the state grant? Anybody disagree with that?
Because to do more enforcement rather than prevention, I agree.
Which is all it can be. Okay.
Does the, is the city manager going to come back with a proposal for retaining the current staff in a position outside the police department to do more preventive type of work?
I think that will be part of the preparation of my recommended budget. Quite frankly, I don't view that any city staff member at this point should count on truthfully having secured employment. I think it's all a function of whatever our fiscal picture looks like. I won't have a really good idea of that until we start getting, truthfully, a major factor will be our property assessments, which we will not get from the state until February.
Please ignore that comment until after this presentation. I want you to feel nervous at this.
Police accreditation. We've discussed this once in my tenure here. And we've worked very hard. My, Jack Van Wagen, my accreditation officer is here tonight with me. We got the 20 hours and filled the position. We came to you, obviously, after we evaluated we couldn't go forward and we had to step back. And in stepping back, we've worked between 20 and 30 hours. Ms. Matthews gave me some extra hours in an effort to see if we could bring it up to speed. We've worked very hard at it and Jack has always been honest with me. He's probably the, one of the few people that have ever written me a memo abolishing his job, but he did that. And we cannot with 20 hours a week achieve accreditation. Most departments, and we did a survey, same size, has two people doing it or has one person with administrative support or a civilian. But generally, it's two police officers that do it at most departments in the area. Montgomery County had a civilian. They retired and I just happened to bring her onboard here as part-time. They've actually suspended their program right now. They're not going forward. I haven't been able to find out if they're getting out of it, but they've suspended going forward for what they call the reexamination. Kalia's added more standards, which makes it harder. We've never had a full-time person here. 20 hours was a good start, but it doesn't, doesn't get it. To get it done, we need two people for at least a year and a half to two years. And then we need three people the final year for the, what they call the final inspection and everything that goes with. What I have proposed is Jack continues to work on me on all the policies and directives that we need to keep up to date so we can meet our standards and so we can be not liable for things that go wrong in the department. And he does my research on that. We have, we have a grant right now that will pay his salary for the next two years so we can evaluate him in a policy and research position, which most departments have, and even small departments. So we can continue to do the things we need to do so that we're up to date on general orders, directives and procedures in our department so that we don't run into a problem civilly or with any other problem. But to get accreditation, to be honest and be straightforward, it cannot be accomplished on 20 hours a week. With what our goals and objectives are, I don't think I have to go back over that again. But basically, right now, it's crime fighting. I don't think I have any of, I don't think I have the personnel to take two people off the street. I know that you're not going to add two people to my budget. So the recommendation is to continue to have a policy research position for two years. I can pay for what a grant that will save us money. And then we can reevaluate it at the end of that period if we want to continue. But I think it's more than me and Smash because I'm keeping Jack busy, obviously, doing all the things we normally do to keep our policies up to date. We just will not be able to meet accreditation.
Councilmember Robinson?
Kalia is the one who administers the accreditation. Do I have that right?
They're the ones we get the accreditation from.
They, we get that from. Are they trying to put themselves out of business here by putting the amount of specs in place where it takes two people for a small department? I mean, it seems, it's some kind of crazy inflation is what it sounds like.
Well, let me tell you, Arlington County's pulled out of it this year. Park Police has pulled out of it this year. I talked to chiefs all the... I talk to chiefs all the time about it.
Has anyone talked to Calea?
Yeah, you, Calea, I mean, I could give you my own opinion of Calea, but, you know.
I guess that's what I'm picking for, but maybe I don't really want it.
I agree with, I think they've just created more and more to create more work to, to obviously justify their existence. And as, as I look at all this stuff that comes in, and Jack shows it to me, I mean, they've reached a point where they want to control everything and they want you to have it. And, you know, you don't, we're a very good department. We don't get sued very often, not in one. I haven't seen one since I've been here and I hope I don't see one. But we work hard, and most departments do work hard, and that's why you keep a policy and research guy to make sure you're positive. But Calea's come up with so many standards for a small department. I mean, when the, other departments are going, they have two to three people, they ask for assistance from other departments to come in and help them with inspections and looking at things. It's, it's a production. They make money because they send out a lot of people, they keep themselves going. I just think they're going to put themselves out of business.
All right, that was the answer I was.
Yeah, well, you're right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright, and then Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Schultz.
Do most departments of our si, are most departments of our size accredited?
In the general area here right now, yeah.
I would say.
But they also, go ahead.
I would say, Councilmember Wright, in my experience, many of the cities that I've worked for, smaller communities, many of them did not, were not accredited agencies because of the demand. It, they just didn't feel that they had the fiscal resources to put that many people into accreditation.
So I don't want to create a lot of work, but I wonder if that number could be found pretty easily of comparable sized departments.
I've got the number, I've got the statistics, but you've got to realize, Gathersburg's accredited, Rockville's accredited, they're not full service. That's a big difference. We're a full-service department.
I mean, full-service departments that are comparable sized around the country.
I believe that Hyattville, Jack, and correct me if I'm wrong, is accredited, but I think they.
They're not full service.
Yeah, but I think they also dedicate two to three people to that effort, based on the information Jack had provided.
I guess the question isn't just in this area, but like, of comparable full-service departments.
Sure.
How many people bother to.
To do it.
To do it, I think would be helpful.
Okay.
And the second question is, do, does, do we get any advantage from being accredited? Like.
We, we get a minor reduction in the cost of our police liability insurance. And I had given that number to the council at one time. I, I don't recall what it is, but it's, it's.
I think it was sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's around fifteen hundred dollars, I think. But I think actually the application fee, or I'm probably calling it the wrong thing, for the onsite assessment itself is like seventy-five hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Plus, we have to pay the expenses for the, the sensors when they come onsite. Anyway, to get accredited one year would probably cost us close to fifteen thousand dollars.
But I think, Councilmember Wright, we can probably, possibly get that information from Calea and we'll see if we can get that for you.
And I, and I believe the Calea website has a lot of information on it.
All right. We'll just see if it's.
I mean, they're departments of our size, but they also have people dedicated to it. That's the difference. And we're a full-service department. If you compare us to Gathersburg and Rockville, who are in the same county on the same issues that we are, neither one of them are full service. Gathersburg will, at times, will go off the radar. Basically, we're not taking radio calls for eight hours today because we're going to do training. We don't do that. We can't do that.
Do they, do they have the same burden of accreditation that we do, even though they're only partial departments?
Yeah.
Non-full service, so it's double whammy for them.
Yeah.
Mayor Williams, I don't know if asking Jack up to give us some other insights makes sense.
I want to get any questions that the council has, and then we can go there if we need to. Did you finish?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Another thing that we get from, benefit that we get derived from accreditation is an assurance in the community that an independent organization has looked at the, the policies and procedures and the adherence to those policies and procedures by the police department. As you know, Chief, the police department is relatively opaque compared to other departments within the city. There's much that goes on the police department that the council and the community don't get to know about. And the benefit of accreditation is that an outside organization is coming in, looking at it, saying, yes, they are doing things the way they should be doing. They have policies and procedures that they follow that are adherent to the norm in the, in the policing business and that the, that your department is, is adhering to those policies and procedures. So I think that's the biggest benefit of accreditation. It's certainly nice that we get some insurance benefit from it. But I think the, the big thing is the, the oversight of the department that this council is not in a position to provide. And I, it kind of puzzles me that the department was accredited, meaning that we had the policies and procedures in place that were acceptable to Calea about a year before you arrived as chief. We lost that accreditation, did not maintain it because of the inadequacy of reporting on adherence to those policies and procedures.
No, that's not correct, sir. We were not accredited and we had to give out because there was no work done. Okay? No work done because we don't have the people to do it. What you're saying is correct, but if you don't have people to do it, you can't produce something. If you want to give me the officers, I will do it. I believe in Calea. That is why I'm keeping somebody on to do policy and research so we keep up with the standards that are acceptable in the law enforcement community. But I'm not going to promise you something I can't deliver with a twenty hours a week when everybody else in this area has two people and do three for it. They got accredited because they did everything for two people for one year to get it done, and then they stopped. That doesn't, that's not accredited department. Anybody can fill a folder. And that's what we did. We filled folders, we did it so we could get through it, and then we stopped. I'm trying to do something that's right and stays in place. And if you give me the personnel to do it, I can get it done. But I don't have the personnel to do it, and it's not a matter of what's good or bad. If we keep somebody in place for policy, we are going to be, which you're talking about, to keep the continued standards. We just can't do the accreditation thing. And I don't know that the taxpayers are going to put that kind of money out in a time when law enforcement is trying to do other things.
I think the issue, I mean, ultimately, in terms of if the council was so inclined, it's, it's a matter of priority and a matter of where the council puts its emphasis. I think Councilmember Wright was alluding to, I believe possibly that there may be some benefit to having a community outreach person in the police department. You know, I think the question before the council is if you feel that there is adequate funding to provide more resources to the police department, is accreditation where you would choose to dedicate those resources or would you prefer to have a community outreach officer, more officer presence on the street? If it's all a matter of how do you want to slice the fiscal pie that is constrained.
I think it would be helpful for me, at least, to have Calea come in here to be interviewed by the council so that we understand the situation more fully from their perspective, too.
I disagree with that. Calea makes money out of this. They're going to tell you how good the program is. I don't have a problem with the program. You're missing the point here. We don't have the people to do it. What's more important, arresting people, keeping the streets safe, or you want to take three people off the street and put them in there? That's the part. If you want to give me the people to do it, we can do it, and I want to do it. But you have to, you have to prioritize what you want. And I don't think taking two officers off the street to do Calea right now is the way to go.
What I want is a oversight of the department that can be provided by an organization that.
They don't do oversight, sir. They accredit you. That's not oversight. Oversight comes from you and comes from the manager who I answer to.
They are providing a view of the department that we, as council members, cannot have on whether the police department is adhering to the policies and procedures. We don't.
If I can just say that we wouldn't have that even if Calea were in place? Because the council doesn't, that's not our function, the, the city manager is the oversight of the department head. And if you're looking for kind of the professional eye, it sounds like Calea isn't doing it.
I believe what Councilmember Siemens is referring to, that's sort of a best practices checklist in terms of what type of, you know, do you have a policy that addresses this? Do you have a policy that addresses this? What are your procedures and are you complying with them? I would agree with the chief, that's, that's not an, kind of an oversight. I, I think it is a framework to ensure that things happen. I would say, personally, I have worked with many fine police departments that kept all their policies and procedures up to date, never had a problem with litigation. They simply did not go to that, what I would call that extra step of getting the stamp of accreditation from Calea, simply because it was a matter of fiscal priorities and where they chose to put their emphasis. So I do agree with you, Councilmember Siemens, and I think the chief would as well, there is a helpful framework. I think what the chief is suggesting, that if we can continue to have the twenty hours a week position, we believe that we can continue to provide appropriate emphasis on those policies and procedures. What you do not get is that kind of stamp of approval, if you will, from Calea.
Councilmember Schultz?
You know, these, this discussion is awfully reminiscent of discussions that we had with you when I served on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Council, in which the whole question of accreditation and its value was debated at length. And what I learned from that, and I want to share that, is that accreditation of police departments isn't quite the same height thing as you would say is an accreditation of a, of a school or university, of a private school that gives you a certainty that that diploma or degree is going to be fully recognized. And if you can't get accreditation, you're pretty well out of business. You can't function. Or a hospital is, is basically crippled if it doesn't have accreditation. But my understanding was, and help me if I'm wrong on this, by the way, I'm going to support your recommendation, Chief, is that the large majority of police departments in the United States don't receive accreditation, including the largest departments in the United States, in New York, in Los Angeles, and the other big ones? That there is more than one accrediting entity out there besides Calea? And that the standards for these accreditations, unlike it would be, say, for universities and for hospitals, continues to change from year to year, to keep adding new criteria, subtracting them and changing them, which only complicates the matter? And that when you get all said and done, it doesn't guarantee that the quality of crime enforcement is going, which is really the bottom line in a community. You ask a citizen, would you rather have crime be reduced or would you rather have your police department accredited? People are probably going to say they'd rather have crime reduced. Because most citizens probably could care less whether the Tacoma Park Police Department is accredited. Most citizens aren't even aware that there is an accreditation. Yeah, I think we can all say that it would be great to be able to say that the police department is accredited. As far as I recollect from those discussions, it's not even a matter that it assists you in recruiting good sworn officers. Because sworn officers, apparently, it's not that important to be able to say, oh, I've worked for X number of years for so many various accredited police departments. It's, it's, so that's my understanding of it. And if I'm incorrect on what I'm telling you, please, could you comment?
No, I think when we discussed this before for the Public Safety Committee, people need to understand, Councilman Siemens, when Calea comes in, they look at folders. And you have to have proofs in folders that you do certain things. They don't go out and look and see how we perform our job, they just look at the folders, the standards. Do we meet the standards? And that's what they base it on. The standards, most of them we are still meeting because they are part of our policy and will continue to be a part of our policy. The only thing we're not doing is bringing an outside agency in to say, yes, you've got everything in the folders. And to give you an example, we did that three years ago. Somebody came in and everything was in the folders. And then we stopped the minute they walked out the door, and I'm not blaming anybody. We didn't have the personnel to do it. This is not the first time. This has happened twice with Tacoma Park Police. Tony got, Tony Fisher got you all accredited originally, and then when he left, it fell behind when Tom Anderson came onboard. We're going through the same circle again, and I'm being realistic and honest, I'm not going to promise you something. It makes me look good. Every chief wants to say they're accredited. But chiefs are being realistic today in what it takes. Why did Park Police get out of it? Because it takes too many resources. The money is obviously an issue, not a big one. But if you run a good research and policy department, you keep up to date. Why did Arlington County, that's a big county, their chief made it clear to everybody that it didn't make sense when he had a policy placed in Park? We don't have the time to have three or four people, which you do in a big department. Departments are reevaluating it. Yes, they, they continue to add standards, as Councilman Robinson says, sometimes I think they're trying to push themselves out of the business because they're adding standards. These standards in cases cost us more money in that we have to do certain things or build something or make sure we have a certain equipment. They're very specific in what we do. So it's not just with the seventy-five hundred and then the extra money in the year we do it. There's a lot of there involved. Oversight, obviously, you look to me and you look to the city manager for oversight of the department. And if I don't do my job well, then I know what the results are. I'm in a profession where we stay three years, three point two is still the average stay of a police chief, and that's something you live with. I have a responsibility, my integrity and ethics is important to me and anyone that knows me, especially Barb, because we have these discussions all the time. It's a great thing when we have money and we have people. When you don't have money and you don't have people, I think it's, it's something we can't do. It's not something, we're not going to continue some of the policies because we are. Jack will continue to get, we still look at all the standards every department choosing in the area. We'll still look at the standards Calea puts out because we get that information from them. So we can continue to stay up to date. What we're not going to do is have all the files and folders in place that we have to do on accreditation. And that's what you're really talking about.
And if I can just add one little bit of information that you left out in your recitation of which chief followed who? You left out Bob Phillips between Tony Fisher and Tom Anderson.
Well, Bob was here a short time. I dealt with Bob Moore downtown in Community Policing Office.
Yeah.
Where I got money.
Yeah, he moved to the federal government to spend some money. Councilmember Wright?
Well, first, I hope you stay a lot longer than three point two years. To me, this is similar to the LEED discussion, actually, which was, we could do everything that's in a LEED building to have a good, environmentally sound building and not pay to get the LEED certification. I think that's the same situation here. We can do and have all the policies in place and not pay to have the accreditation. In the case of LEED, we decided that the cost differential was not so great and we wanted to have that official stamp, mainly for a public relation, from a public relation standpoint. And it's, again, a trade-off. Do we want to either pay for two additional people or take two additional people off the street to have this stamp and this accreditation? I appreciate the chief's realistic recommendation, and I think that it's not a luxury that we can afford, either in cost, new costs, or officers off the, the street. And if you said to me, I want two new people, I would not say you should spend those two new people on accreditation. And so the last thing I would just say is I think it's great that we have Jack here doing the work, and maybe it would actually be helpful for the council if, once a year, we had a little report on, hey, did we, what have we learned? Is there something new about process and procedure and policy? Are we changing something? You know, what are the key things that the chief could highlight? That, to me, would, since we're not going to do the full accreditation, that would suffice, given the, the financial constraints. That's kind of where I'm at.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, I'm okay with dropping accreditation. I, I do take Terry's point about having transparency in the department. I think we ought to have transparency in all, all of our departments, and I think that's a very important point to make and follow through on.
Well, I, I guess my reaction is that would be wonderful, but we're, there are more constraints with the police department than there are with any other department in terms of transparency. There's the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights. There's any number of, of constraints that make it so that what we might wish for just isn't realistic.
To the extent that it's reasonable. Wright?
Yes.
To the extent that it's reasonable. And I will just add that for that reason, I can't support dropping it.
It's, is everybody else in favor of dropping it? Am I correct in assuming Terry is the only one who says, no, he can't support dropping it? Okay.
If I may just add, as the chief mentioned, there was a grant we had received where we could shift Jack's salary to that grant out of the general fund. If there's no concern about that, and I can't imagine that there would be, we will formalize that in a budget amendment. amendment to be presented to the council after the first of the year.
It's not related to speed cameras, is it?
Though I would add that we are seeing, the impact of the state law change is fairly significant, so you might yet see another budget amendment on the speed camera funds. It's a little too soon to tell, but the early indications are.
Thirty-five percent reduction.
Yeah.
But we're still getting a number of violations on the order of five thousand a month?
I think the last figure you showed me was about five thousand paid citations a month. What we can certainly do, we'll have a little bit more data after the council recess, and perhaps we could schedule a time, you and I can talk about that tomorrow, to maybe give the council an update on what we're actually seeing with all the various changes.
And also, people should remember that there was the Attorney General's opinion that the difficulty we thought we might have with having to roll over the prior year's funds isn't a concern that we thought, so it may be a little bit easier to deal with the funds that we do have. Councilperson?
Yes, on this exact topic, when you do this little summary and review, could you make an estimate of what you think the effect of the work on Hampshire will be that the state has a higher concentration?
Terry?
Thank you.
And was there anything else that you needed to cover? Okay, then we're adjourned.